I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, we do have a voluntary annexation public hearing, and I'll call that to order right now. Do we have anybody here to speak on the public hearing? Go ahead.
This is for GMJ Homes LLC, Gail Williamson. It is located on, what do I do with that? 20296 Legend Lane, and this is the last house on Legend. The rest of them are annexed, so we'll have the whole road in. Once we do this, it is contiguous. It's right in the middle of the home, so everything is good. We haven't had any phone calls or anything on it, or anybody question it. We did run a notice in the newspaper. It ran on October the 16th, so we have notified the public about it, so.
Any other comments? If not, do we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Linda makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Now I'll call the council meeting to order. We do have a forum, we have one person out tonight. We do have some awards this morning. If we could have the youth sports presentation, or presentees come on up front. I'm gonna have Todd Williams pass it out, so I can't get around on my cane.
She's got crutches, Mary.
I know.
You wanna use my walker?
Who's gonna read that?
Who's gonna read it?
Where's the certificate and all that stuff?
She's got 'em right here, ma'am.
Oh, she's got it.
It's all right.
Okay. You guys figure it out.
All right. Chris, this is for you. Appreciation is hereby presented to Chris Gillen with appreciation, respect, and gratitude for providing your time as 2019 fall soccer coach in support of the mission statement of Wayneville St. Robert Youth Sports.
Congratulations.
All right, here we go. One for certificate appreciation is hereby presented to Landon Grant with appreciation, is that right? Gant, I'm sorry. With appreciation, respect, and gratitude for providing your time as 2019 fall soccer coach in support of the mission statement of Wayneville St. Robert Youth Sports.
All right.
What's your, just stand over here, Chris, right here, buddy. Thank you.
Yeah, we gotta get your picture.
More to come.
I didn't even hear his name.
Chris.
All right. Certificate appreciation is presented to Matthew Slatcher, I got the name right this time, with respect, with appreciation, respect, and gratitude for providing your time as 2019 fall soccer coach in support of the mission statement of Wayneville St. Robert Youth Sports. Nicholas Vila?
Vila.
With appreciation, respect, and gratitude for providing your time as 2019 fall soccer coach in support of the mission statement of Wayneville St. Robert Youth Sports.
Nikki, you don't get one more, you're a coach.
I am.
No, you're good, you're good, you're good. Come back, come back, come back.
You're gonna take a picture of you all.
Come back, you're good.
Yeah, cover yourself.
You're good.
That's good. High tension, breaker.
Yeah.
Time, effort, and money. And money.
And we couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out tonight, appreciate it.
Aaron. We have a few that were supposed to show up, but they didn't.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
How you doing, buddy? I want to show you the city.
I'm fine.
No? Handshake or?
You'll see him at the stadium one day.
Don't scare a guy away from me.
And Kevin Hillman, you said there was something on that, Anita? Anita?
Yes, sir.
Said there was something on Kevin Hillman as the next agenda item?
Oh, yes. Kevin had a glow-in-the-dark golf tournament up at our little golf course, and they collected a hundred dollars for shop with the cop.
Okay.
He said he'd bring it up tomorrow and give it to Cooley. He takes care of that, but he was sorry he couldn't be here tonight. He had something come up that he couldn't cancel, but he wanted to know that he did have the tournament, and it was a success, and they got the donation for that, so.
All right.
Good for Kevin.
Okay, tonight we have a consent agenda. Treasurers report approval in minutes of October 1st and the 18th of October, and approved payment of bills. Can we have treasurer's report, please?
Treasurer's report, November 5th, 2019. We have payable checks in the amount of $115,683.51. There are nine checks to major vendors. They represent 75% of the above-mentioned payable checks in the amount of $86,763.68. Payroll ACH for November 1st, 2019, $139,319.77. We have five bond payments totaling $63,211.91. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $318,215.19.
Okay, get a motion to approve this. Todd makes a motion, that's where Ace is second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John.
Okay, we've got a heavy agenda tonight. 6.1, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane is 6.1. Can we have that as a bill, please?
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the, Linda makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a heavy agenda tonight. 6.1, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane is 6.1. Can we have that as a bill, please?
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the, Linda makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read this in ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3443, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Teresa makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading of the ordinance. Teresa makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a new credit account for the transfer station is the next one. Please read this bill.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, 6.3 is an ordinance repealing 3433 and approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families. Read this bill, please.
Bill number 19118, ordinance repealing ordinance number 3433, approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a heavy agenda tonight.
6.1, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane is 6.1. Can we have that as a bill, please?
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the, Linda makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19116, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read this in ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3443, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 20296 Legend Lane.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Teresa makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a new credit account for the transfer station is the next one. Please read this bill.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19117, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the, do we get the ordinance? Reggie makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Okay, 6.3 is an ordinance repealing 3433 and approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated. Read this bill, please.
Bill number 19118, ordinance repealing ordinance number 3433, approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading?
Bill number 19118, ordinance repealing ordinance number 3433, approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any second reading?
Bill number 19118, ordinance repealing ordinance number 3433, approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, read this in ordinance.
Ordinance number 3445, ordinance repealing ordinance number 333, approving lease agreement with Blue Star Families Incorporated.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Reggie makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, next committee meeting, schedule purple board. Steve, when do you need?
No.
No? Emergency services, fire department, need any meeting?
Finance does.
I thought you were saying finance.
Yeah, I know. I wrote it in on my own.
Don't you go again.
We haven't had one with me for so long.
You write down on yours, you don't write down on everyone's.
Pass it down.
Did you set a date?
Yes. On the 21st, 4 o'clock, if that's good for everyone, if not, at 5.
Okay.
4 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just say, park committee?
21st.
21st or 20th?
21st.
21st. We are gonna have a committee meeting for Christmas in the park, but I'm not sure when we're gonna have it. They'll let us know when they're gonna have it.
Okay. Comments by aldermen, start down here with John this week.
I have no comment.
Walter?
10 in a great evening out at Stonewood.
The MRPC.
Yes. I was stumbling over the name of that, but we had four or five of us attending, and we had a pretty good time there and learned a lot.
Yes.
So we appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Walter.
I was just talking to Steve, those lights that are going up throughout the city, the LED lights are, they're awesome, they're bright and clear, and, you know, I mean, we also talked that that might help, you know, with any kind of people that are trying to be in the dark, because they no longer can be, so the job on those, it looks good.
Yeah. You know, Alan Johansson sent me an email, wanted me to share it with you. They did his street, and he said it's fantastic. Hey, Reggie?
Nothing.
Okay, Linda?
I have something for Steve later.
Okay.
Yes, the LED lights are fantastic.
See? Yeah. They get your lights down, does that give my effects?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Teresa?
I was just gonna comment on MRPC. Susan brought me the books and the information, and as usual, they always put out a good
They'll let us know when they're going to have it.
Comments by Aldermen, start down here with John this week.
I have no comment.
Walter?
Attending a great evening out at Stormbrook.
The MRPC.
Yes. I was stumbling over the name of that, but we had four or five of us attending, and we had a pretty good time there and learned a lot. So, appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Walter.
I was just talking to Steve, those lights that are going up throughout the city, the LED lights are, they're awesome, they're bright and clear, and, you know, I mean, we also talked that that might help, you know, with any kind of people that are trying to be in the dark because they no longer can be, so good job on those, it looks good.
You know, Ellen Johansson sent me an email, wanted me to share it with you, they did his street, and he said it's fantastic. Reggie?
Nothing.
Okay, Linda?
I have something for Steve later.
Okay.
Yes, the LED lights are fantastic.
Did you get your lights done, is that gonna be fixed?
Yes, yes.
Teresa?
I was just going to comment on MRPC. Susan brought me the books and the information, and as usual, they always put out a good one, so I'm sorry I missed it.
Okay. Comments by administration, City Clerk?
Okay.
Finance officer?
Well, just a couple of-
Emma.
You gotta wait for your interdiction.
Water passer out.
Okay, reported taxable sales in the city to date through the month of November is This shows a 5.49% increase over November of 2018. We continue to work on the budget. The department heads do have their budget sheet, so hopefully at the 21st meeting, we can finalize some things. This week, November, well, tomorrow, November the 6th, and on November the 7th, the city will be hosting the annual G-Works user group meeting that's training on our system software that handles the accounting, the payroll, the utility billing, court management, and everything. So, we're going to have about 15 surrounding cities here, I hope, to be involved in that training. If you would like, G-Works will be hosting a social event at Z-Law Bar and Grill at 4:5 tomorrow night, if you would like to attend.
Is it the community center?
I know, the community center is at 6, I think, but at Z-Law, it's 45, their social hour.
Okay.
They're making, normally, it's a one-day event, but this year, they made it two. Also, the balance in the operating account is 2.1 million.
Sounds good. Good report. Okay. Fire chief?
Yeah.
Yeah. Get away from training tonight.
Two things I want to go, or I'm going to pass this out because I was concerned the first topic, starting with you, how's that?
You colored very well.
Is it good?
Great job.
Not bad for kindergarten work. Well, good evening. What you see being passed around is, last week, myself and my deputy chief, Light, spent a week in Appleton, Wisconsin, well, three and a half days, going over the pre-build of the brand-new 107-foot Pierce serial apparatus. So, that is a diagram of what the finished product's going to look like, just going over this incredible, they got five factories in this town, and 70,000 people, and just going over it, I mean, Pierce is just for custom cab, top-notch, it really is.
That'll move the factory down here.
It'd be nice. It would be. The picture's not going to do it any justice of what it's really going to look like, but that gives you an idea of how it's going to come out and how we designed it, the color scheme, the lettering, you can tell that.
The flag.
Yep.
Flags it.
Yep, right up front, right there. And then there's something else, you can't really see it, but there's something else on the back compartments that's in there.
Yeah.
That's also on there, so, yep, that we put in there. It says "In God We Trust" on both sides, so.
Can I climb it when we get it?
Yeah.
Woo-hoo!
If you all want to, sure.
Can I stand on the end of it and you raise me up? I'm not climbing that.
Well, yeah, that's fine, there's no problem. It isn't.
Looks like a pretty good product, it really does. 107-foot, and just looking over all of them that's being built up there, I mean, it's amazing. That town thrives, you know, they employ like 1,200 people in that town alone, which is for 70,000.
Really?
Yeah. They really roll out the red carpet because you've got, it's kind of like here, you know, you've got people, 100, 200 people a week coming in to build trucks there, at that factory.
Wow.
So, the motels, the restaurants, everything, you know.
It's all supported.
Yep, all supported, so it's really good. Really neat place, really enjoyable.
Know what they're talking about, know what they're doing.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, if you look at it, I mean, you get into the custom cab trucks, which is what we need to be doing anyways, it's really, they are the leader, you know, Pierce is one of the nation's leading one, next to E1, so, pretty happy with that. We go up again for the mid-build in March, and then the final in May.
I'm sorry, you said the city while I was looking at it. Were we having it done?
What's that?
The city of where we're having it done?
Oh, Appleton.
Appleton.
Yep, Appleton, yep, Appleton, Wisconsin, about 35 miles, I think it's going to be south of Green Bay, if I got my directions right, I could be wrong on that, so, but anyway, snow the first day. Yes, true.
I know it's a small community, but I'm just curious, what did their equipment look like?
Was that their city?
Yes.
I did not tier any-
Surrounding.
Yeah, I did not tier any of the surrounding departments or nothing of that nature.
You didn't venture into any?
No, 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 I didn't, because I know the Pierce product, that's all Fort Wood out here runs, so a lot of their big departments do too, a lot of military bases have Pierce predominantly also, so, no, I'm sure, if I'm going to take a guess, it's probably going to be predominantly Pierce since it's built right in their backyard, you know, the fire department for Appleton, and probably even on into Green Bay area.
Let's hope.
So, yeah, yeah. So, but, pretty neat. They're saying it'll be done by the end of May, so, and we'll take delivery of it.
How much more quickly was that than we initially were told?
Actually, it's about 30 days quicker than what we were initially told, so, I'm actually kind of amazed that, you know, it's about an eight, nine-month turnaround, you know, a lot of time, you're into 16 months when you're into, you know.
Yeah, because we ordered it two months ago already, so.
Yeah. So, it's pretty impressive, I mean, just the way they got the factory set up, and like I said, there's five different locations up there to the processes that you go through on the truck. Pretty impressive, really is.
Good.
So, I wanted to pass around, so you kind of get that, get that idea in your head, on what it's going to look like, I think it's a pretty good scheme, and the lettering looks good, the flag on the front, like you pointed out, looks really good, so, and seeing it on the finished trucks up there, it is really, really nice looking. We'll get it.
That number on the truck, is this significant?
1659 it is, it's our numbering system. St. Robert is 1,600 series, and everybody in the county has their own numbering system, like we're 1,600 numbers, like Crocker's 1,500, Wayzle's 1,900, everybody has their own numbering system. That's how it is, and we all keep it the same for our engines and tankers because of countywide mutual aid, so, yeah. So, it works out, works out pretty good, really, makes it organized, we know what's coming from whoever's coming and all that stuff, so it really does make it organized. Yeah, we actually done that, I think it's probably been 20 years ago, we started at maybe 20 plus, so, I've been around a while, also, I'm trying to remember back, so, yeah, 20, maybe 25, so, actually, I think it was shortly after we got the two fright liners when you were mayor the first time, when we started a new numbering system, so it's been quite a while back, so. But, pretty excited, it's going to be really, really nice, it really is, so. The next thing I wanted to bring up here, I was talking to the mayor about this, and he wanted me to go ahead and do it, had to get a, need to get a command vehicle for the deputy chief for next year, since he's full-time, so the mayor asked me to see what they'd give us, trade-in on mine, it's now four years old, and we gave $34,000 for it, and they're going to give us $31,000 for it.
Oh.
So, that's pretty good. So, what I wanted to say is, we hit, between the difference of my truck and his truck, we're going to get two trucks for $39,868 for two full-drive super crew cabs, brand-new F-150s.
Full warranty.
Full warranty.
Deputy chief?
And we wanted to prepare you for that, so we can get it approved, I think you plan on approving the budget, hopefully, the next council meeting, because on the bid that they gave us for the trade-in, and on these, is good till like November the 27th, what Ford was telling us.
Yeah, we need to do this, Anita.
21st.
Do you have the bids, Mike?
Oh, yeah, I got the, I got the bid from Selma right here. I'll just email it to you, so, yeah, the mayor wanted me to bring it up tonight. So, that's, that's pretty good, pretty good value, of course, that's the government bid we get also, is the city.
And it to Edna also?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it this year's budget?
No, this is for next year's, yeah, on the capital expenditure side, I believe, which I'm about done, I'll have that emailed to you too. So, but that's, that's pretty, you know, I was pretty, pretty surprised, I mean, we gave 34 for it four years ago, you know, to give us $31,000, that's pretty good, so two trucks for, like I said, $38,000, that's not, that's not too bad, brand-new, wish I could go off the street and do that, but, but that's the perk, that's the blessing of the, you know, helping the city out, the government bid, so.
So, we're trading in two trucks?
No, one truck.
Buying two.
Buying two.
Okay, so that, we don't have an assistant chief right now, so there is no-
Yes, he just doesn't have a vehicle.
But he's never had a vehicle of his own?
Right now, we're, we use a '97 Crown Victoria from PD, and it's about done, so, actually, transmission's currently going out, and so we've just been baiting it, so, waiting for the right time to-
Can we trade that in?
I don't think we'd get much out of that, probably they'll surplus that and just, yeah, so.
Might not get anything that way either.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
But anyway, that's all I got for now.
Steve, you're up next, you got a question?
No, I said thanks.
For Steve?
1930, I was on five years. A couple of things to pass on tonight, we received our road salt on October 11th, we ordered 175 ton, or close to it, so they haul as much as they can to get us that, to that close of a tonnage, and it was 175. So, that means we have 25 ton left in reserve, because we're allocated up to 200 ton. The northern end of the water main, by the Aquatic Center, the new road, we have that installed, we had to get it installed before the road was actually going to be put in, so we're waiting on the other end, and we'll finish that whenever Jeff gets us, we have to get a short easement up through there to tie into our water main up in that area. And also, today, when I come over here for the meeting, they was finishing rolling that road over there, so they got it paved today.
I saw him leaving.
We seen him. We had a water main break on Y Highway on Sunday, October the 20th, and last week, an injector, one of our chlorine injectors went out in well number 20, out in the Ridge Creek subdivision, so, that caused it to backflush into the chlorine bucket, so we was able to get on that pretty fast and get a rebuild an injector to go in there, and it's back up and running now. We're waiting on samples to come back before we, we take them off a boil advisory, or boil-
It was all fixed the same day, though?
Yes.
Yeah, and-
Just waiting on the test.
Yeah, I think we have to have two consecutive good samples, so, one was taken, and D and R come down and went through stuff with us, so, they're, they're well aware. And then on October 28th, there was a diesel spill here on East Lawn and Mo Avenue, and we got called out to assist the fire department, the police department, and MoDOT, so, we got that cleaned up pretty decent.
What are those red cones up there?
Those are MoDots.
MoDots.
Yeah.
Does that have any effect on that asphalt? Was it on there long enough?
No, they, I think, they pretty much cleaned theirselves and the fire department out of oil dry. They got it down, soaked up as much as they could, we brought our street sweeper out, got it picked up, took it over to the MoDOT shed for them to dispose of, and then we left some more oil dry on it overnight. The very next day, we pulled that up, and then we, it was still had a pretty good film on it, so, we started, we scrubbed it with some Dawn dish soap and washed it off, and then run our street sweeper over it, and it picked it all up.
Just made a commercial.
Yeah.
It's got to be Dawn.
And then we, after we collected all that, we took it over and ran it through our oil water separator over at the shop, so, it's a good place to dump it. And that's all I have.
Street sweeper? Want to tell that street sweeper with the county?
What?
Street sweeper with the county.
Oh.
Lynn Sharp came and wanted to use our street sweeper for an issue they had with their roads, but we had some issues with it too.
Well, it was, they, they chip and sealed a whole neighborhood, I guess, and it was a lot of gravel left on the road, so they wanted us to go sweep it up for them, it was starting to washboard, that's how much gravel they'd left on there.
Wow.
We didn't get too far, and they stopped us because I don't think they got enough oil on the road, and we was pulling everything off, back off, so, I don't know what they're going to-
We tried.
Yeah.
We tried to help.
Well, doing the whole thing at one time, that's not really smart, is it?
I mean, if they, you know, I don't know who done the chip and seal, and they probably need to have the, their contractor come back and look it over and see why it didn't set in that good.
Set.
Yeah, plain here. Okay, thank you.
Don't you go to her. First of all, that pond over by the pool looks really nice.
It does, it's looking so good.
You guys have really done a good job fixing that up.
Yeah.
It looked, doesn't even look like the same place, looks really nice.
Yeah.
Second of all, we don't have any progression on the dog park, there's nothing happening with the dog park. Why?
I don't know, unless I go kidnap the contractor and hold him over there until he gets it done.
Well, let's do that.
He, he said it was going to be eight weeks out when we first originally ordered the fence, so.
And that's been three months ago.
Nah.
Yeah.
When we ordered the fence, we're probably bumping eight weeks right now.
It should be pretty quick.
Don't you have to, is he going to plant grass down in that lower part, or are we going to plant some grass in there?
We will, but we're waiting to get that fence put in.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we're going to work around it.
All right.
They got everything else done. Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Don? You're over next.
Dawn's cold, he must have been working outside.
Since the last meeting, we did put cameras in at Shasta, they look really, really nice, so we have two cameras focused on each gate.
Good.
And all, the whole perimeter, pretty much, so that place is pretty well lit up too. The second thing is, on Monday, Fidelity came in, upgraded our internet. We are a little bit more high-speed than we were, and the nice thing is, is our backup internet did kick in when the primary went down, so, we didn't really lose anything except for credit card machines on, on Monday. That's about all I have.
Okay. Now, Jay? Transfer station? Haven't seen much of you this last meeting.
Good evening. The tonnage for October was 5,170, which is about 1,000 tons more than normal because of that demo job that we had on Fort Letterwood. We ran four drivers instead of the usual three for most of that month, and it, they finished Friday. A few days, we ran five drivers, we borrowed, ended up borrowing two trailers from Central Missouri to help keep it all flowing. Three days of the month, we actually did over 350 tons in a day, so it was, it was, had jobs to keep up with it, yeah. The only thing I have right now is, we will be open the day after Thanksgiving, the transfer station will. Still, we'll be closed next Monday, and then we'll be closed on Thanksgiving Day, but we'll be open the Friday after.
You're closed on Veterans Day?
Yes, ma'am. That's all I have, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Tice? Anita?
I just have a few things, Mayor, on the airport, fuel sales were up, they were $5,123 in August, and they went up to $20,267.
Before the C-7.
September, so they had an increase. They also had a slight increase in ridership, wasn't enough to carry them through, they had, actually, a slight, they had one more passenger than the prior month, so, they did have some. We had a walk-through inspection in October and did a punch list, we had, that's when we had the massive rains, and then washed out the fence area in some places in the road, and the runway actually, where the last ones were, they actually popped up.
Oh.
And had flooded, you can't have that across both, so they're working on the punch list and getting it completed. We also had an extension for the extension, they had an increase in the trailers, getting them hooked up, because of the way the, for ADA, they're going to have to dig a hole and get under the trailers to hook everything up, and they hadn't anticipated that, so there was an increase in that.
Yeah, because of the special needs, to get it at 30 inches, they got an exterior railing, so they only got nine inches, so they got to do some special stuff.
That's it on the airport. CCG, the environmental review on the treatment plant, that's been completed in Sania, and we're waiting for permission to advertise it in the paperwork that I've gotten, and after that's done, and the public review, if there's no comments, then we'll wait on permission to go ahead and start knocking down trees. We only have a small window until March or April because of the bats that we have over there, so, we're in a hurry to get it done and have them. Other than that, Sema and FEMA, we forwarded all the information to them for comment, and they have it, so it's in their review also. OEA, me and Edna had a phone call with Mr. Holland, decided we needed a six-month extension. Budget adjustments were made to include a digital classroom, to request one, he told us what he needed for that, he'll be here December the 3rd or 4th to talk about the next steps. Hopefully, we'll talk about doing some studies on our projects that we have going on that are older. MoDOT, Missouri Avenue Lighting Project, contractors will be here Thursday at 1:30 to move forward with that project and get it started for construction. MML, for those that signed up to attend, will be Wednesday night at 6 o'clock at the community center. Veterans Day Parade will be Monday at 11 o'clock here in the city hall parking lot. The speeches start at 11, and the actual parade starts at 11:33, I believe, 11:39, they start pulling out. We've had bi-weekly meetings with the barbecue cook-off, we received a tourism grant for that, that will take care of out-of-the-area advertising, which, we received a letter that we got, and it'll, the total would be around $9,000, so, we're happy about that.
The meeting Thursday at 1:30, that's the time of the start for SOP.
Yeah. Steve will have to go to that, I guess. Cook-off. We had a meeting with, at the commissioner's office with MRPC and MoDOT on county-wide road improvements, and worked on the step, what the priorities would be. Christmas in the park is December the 1st, we're looking for vendors for that. Growth Alliance met on, discussed next steps.
Is the Christmas parade in St. Robert's?
It is.
Okay. I thought we did it all the time.
No, it's at Wayzle.
It's at Wayzle all the time, yeah.
All the time, yeah.
We attended the annual meeting for MRPC, I think that's who you were thinking about, Mr. Reese, we all sat together. We have a census meeting tomorrow, I think we're going to kick off census at 1:30. And Friday, November 8th, we have a platner CID meeting at 9 o'clock, so we've got a busy week this week, and we've been really busy, so.
And we are going to be closed the day after Thanksgiving at what?
It's at 1:30.
We take two days for Thanksgiving, right?
Thursday and Friday.
Mayor, knocking down the trees out.
We will. Yeah, the only thing you got to do is knock them off. Okay. This Thursday at 1:30 is the SOP meeting at the high school, and I was going to tell you, paved day Burger King and the aquatic center, and Mr. Wallace, if you'd like to introduce your students, we appreciate it.
So, we've got Michael, Lisa, Ben, AJ, Colton, and Michaela, we're recording, I have some folks from the way to the high school, Colton, Lyle.
They always ask, do you guys want to be on the other side of the cameras, or you're good where you are, or, you sure?
Todd knows how to do them, great.
Arrive a lot.
He'll get the close-ups.
All right.
Keep Todd over here. Okay, the next regular Board of Aldermen meeting will be November 19, 2019, at 5:00 PM, and we're going to have a meeting closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter 610-021, including section on legal, section 2 of real estate, taking three personnel.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, going to close, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Todd?
Yes.
Sir, did you come for award?
No.
No, okay. We gave some awards earlier.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes. Good job.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.